Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. We call a meeting to order. Counselor Hannah, can you do the very time we have a forum, sir?
We do.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I will ask Mr. Pittmont to provide an indication for us. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Much grace. Dear Lord, we come before you in that name you've made to be a strong tower we can run to in the day of trouble. We confess our faults and our offenses, which are many, and we acknowledge that you alone are our judge, our lawgiver, and our king. Save us, heal our afflictions, and guide us in paths of righteousness for your name's sake. Grant this council discernment in your direction in all their undertakings. Bless their service for the good of our community and help us all to be good stewards in what we receive from your bountiful supply. I ask these blessings in Jesus' name but thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hannah, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you have an agenda, which was distributed previously for review. You'll be on the floor for a motion.
Motion to accept the agenda, as we're saying.
Motion?
Second.
And motion second. Any discussion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. At this evening, we have a couple of things I want to read off to you. We have a lot going on in our community, a lot of good things, a lot of good people doing good things. The Georgia City Solutions, which is part of Georgia Municipal Association, offers a Mayor's Reading Club across the state. And so I'm going to read the proclamation for the Mayor's Reading Club. Whereas literacy is not just an education issue, it's an economic workforce and quality of life issue, and whereas research shows that children who can't read proficiently by the end of the third grade are more likely to experience poor health, have discipline problems, and drop out of high school. And whereas each year in the United States, low literacy levels are linked to hundreds of billions of dollars in non-productivity, healthcare, and judicial costs. And whereas 68% of Georgia fourth graders do not read proficiently. And whereas collaborative efforts and strategic partnerships must be undertaken to address literacy issues. And whereas the Mayor's Reading Club program is offered through Georgia City Solutions, a Georgia Municipal Association nonprofit. And whereas the goal of the program is to improve literacy skills and overall success with early reading among children and youth in Georgia cities throughout encouragement, support, and leadership from city mayors. And whereas Georgia City Solutions has commissioned a children's book series to use as part of the program to teach young readers about local government and a copy of the book titled, "Georgia: Carolina Visits City Hall." And "Georgia: Carolina Visits Our Hometown Heroes" is provided in the program's starter kit. And whereas the Mayor's Reading Club is flexible and can be delivered in person or virtually, promotes partnerships and collaboration between the city, county, schools, public libraries, local nonprofits, and business community. Now therefore, I, Kirk Bradfield, Mayor for the City of Jasper, do hereby join the Mayor's Reading Club and proclaim Saturday, June 8th, as Mayor's Reading Club Day in Jasper, Georgia, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community partners to help promote and elevate the literacy as a community priority and support the Mayor's Reading Club to improve Georgia's economic vitality, one book at a time. Therefore, as of today and until the third day of June 2024. So that will begin this Saturday with the first event being held at Lee Newton Park, 10A1, on the main stage. I'm especially proud of the second proclamation. We have someone very special joining us. Keith Pickens Beautiful Foundation, Caroline Creighton, Volunteer of the Year Board, Vered Kleinberger. A proclamation of the City of Jasper recognizing Vered Kleinberger of Keith Pickens Beautiful as a Caroline Creighton Volunteer of the Year and declaring June 8th, 2024, as Vered Kleinberger's Day. Whereas Keith Pickens Beautiful is a Pickens County nonprofit volunteer organization affiliated with Keep America Beautiful and Keep Georgia Beautiful. And whereas the work of Keith Pickens Beautiful is focused to sustain litter reduction, voluntary recycling, along with projects that enhance the beauty of our environment and improve solid waste management, and whereas Vered Kleinberger has served on the Keith Pickens Beautiful Board of Directors for 15 years and has served as Board President since 2020 by logging over 900 volunteer hours a year to revitalize Keith Pickens Beautiful. And whereas during her tenure as Board President, Vered has increased the number of free, hands-on educational and volunteer opportunities sponsored by Keith Pickens Beautiful, received a grant from Keep America Beautiful for the cigarette litter prevention program, has addressed food insecurity by providing free food and education on how residents can grow their own food. And whereas Vered Kleinberger was chosen as the Caroline Creighton Volunteer of the Year by Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation in recognition of her passion and dedication towards protecting the state's environment through litter prevention, waste production, recycling, and beautification. Whereas the City of Jasper recognizes the valuable work that Keith Pickens Beautiful does within our community. Now, therefore, it being resolved that the City of Jasper recognizes Vered Kleinberger of Keith Pickens Beautiful as the Caroline Creighton Volunteer of the Year and declares June 8th, 2024, as Vered Kleinberger Day, passed and adopted as third day of June 2024 by the City of Jasper. (applause) Just a moment. Once I read this, next one, we're going to come down and grab some pictures with you and we'll say thank you.
Oh, thank you. You're making it blush. Stay here.
Yeah, if you want to stay here right there for just a moment. The third item is a staff recognition, and I am especially glad to present this. Our staff is consistently seeking to be better, do better. And the Carl Vincent Institute of Georgia Government, that UGA, offers a prestigious program that is designed to improve the quality and efficiency of government agencies by developing the effectiveness and professionalism of managers. It's an intensive, multi-part program that involves 300 hours of in-class and out-of-class assignments and active participation. There are three main areas that are studied to achieve this designation, which are self-awareness, collaboration, and process involvement. We are pleased and honored tonight to recognize Andrew Collins as a recent recipient of his public manager certificate, and we are confident that his program continued to reinforce the qualities and skills that we have already recognized in Andrew as a valuable asset for our community and his role as Jasper's utility director, sir. Congratulations and thank you very much.[445.13][445.13](applause) Counsel, if you will, we're going to go down and take a picture of Mr. Andrew, then get a picture of Mrs. Mayors.
(inaudible).
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on up. Thank you for all you did.
Yes.
We're glad to celebrate.
Thank you. That's not why I do this. That'd make me a part of the community.
And hold on there. One more. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Vered. To Andrew. We're looking forward to the many successes we have. Next item on the agenda, under Presentations, item number two, 2023 Audit Presentation, Will Merrick, Ruston and Cale, Presenting Advisors. You have the floor, sir. Thank you for having me.
All right. Thank you for having me. It's great to be here. This is the first time I've actually given this presentation, but I've been working on this audit for several years. It's my pleasure and honor to be here and to work with you guys. I'd like to start off by saying you have a great group of staff. They're awesome to work with, give us everything we ask for when we ask for it, make us feel welcome. We get to kind of take over this room. I don't know if you've ever been here during the audit, but this room kind of looks a little disheveled when we're in the middle of it, but they do a great job and we're honored and blessed to be able to continue to serve as the city's auditor. So I'll kind of jump in and get started. I've given each of you three different items. Two of them are correspondence, kind of from us to you. I'm not going to get into the details of those letters. You can read them as you wish. I'll kind of hit the highlights of them in this presentation as I go. The third one is the bound copy of the city's 2023 annual financial report. Again, this presentation references the numbers in that report, and I'll kind of hit the highlights as I go. You're absolutely welcome to look through it. Any specific questions you may have, email me, call me, or get with Lindsay, and she can get with me. Be happy to answer any specific questions you have whenever. So without further ado, can y'all, can everybody see this?
We have it on our screens here.
Oh, awesome. Fancy in here. And my clicker's not working. This increases the volume. Not changing the slide. All right, so I'll have to step over here and change it. I apologize for that. So this is just a table of contents, kind of a rundown of the things that we're going to hit. I'm not going to spend too much time here. This is just for your reference. All right, first order of business, first and foremost, this is what you pay us guys for. This is what you guys pay us for. This is the audit opinion that we issue over the financial statements of the City of Jasper. And just cutting right to the chase, first line you'll see, we issued an unmodified opinion for the year ended December 31st, 2023. That's a fancy way of saying it's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion the city can have. Basically, we believe that the financial statements fairly present the changes in financial position and cash flows for the year ended December 31st, 2023, and that they are free from misstatement whether due to fraud or error. Along with that opinion, we communicate some responsibilities. Those are in this, one of these letters, the one that says significant audit matters. We kind of communicate who's responsible for what. So the city's responsible for the financial statements, and then it's our responsibility as the auditors come in and provide an opinion over those financial statements. Also in that letter, we talk about some other things, like whether we encountered any difficulties with management during the audit. Of course, we did not, and we communicate that in this letter. We also communicate some significant estimates that go into these financial statements in this letter. I don't want to get into too many details of that. One other item of note here is that we conduct this, we conduct the city's audit according to government audit standards, which are a specific guideline for the procedures we have to do during the audit. So any questions on that? That's good news. That's kind of the biggest deal about all of it, is we're issuing an unmodified opinion. Again, so congratulations. All right, so this is kind of a summary slide, and the point of this is just to kind of differentiate what are the government-wide statements and then what are the fund statements. So the government-wide statements are the statements that show the financial position of the city as a whole. That's all the governmental funds and the enterprise funds of the city. All right, so we'll kind of get into the meat here. So this is your government-wide net position, and remember, this is the net position of the entire government, all the governmental funds and the business-type funds all put together. This chart is kind of meant to represent what makes up that total net position of the city, and I have a breakdown of some of those numbers, but that total net position is up over $30 million. I believe that number is about $32 million. And a large portion of that, as you can see, is your net investment in capital assets. And that basically means that the city has a lot of assets, a lot of infrastructure. As you know, you have a water sewer utility that requires a lot of infrastructure and a lot of capital investment. So you've got about $23 million invested in capital assets, net of any debt on those assets. So this is after you take out debt on those assets, okay? The red is restricted net position. You've got about $2.5 million of restricted net position, which means it's already designated for some kind of use, not by council, but by a third party. And then the green is unrestricted net position. That's net position that's free for use as you see fit. That number is about $6 million, 5.9. You can see this graph, this net position has been increasing pretty steadily for the last three years. We try to present three-year comparisons for usefulness, so it's been increasing over the last three years, which is good. That's healthy. And those increases can be attributed to increase in property tax revenue, increase in sales tax revenue, increase in franchise tax revenue, and a couple of grants that the city has received. So overall, that's a great trend on your government-wide net position. All right, so this is the change in net position over the last three fiscal years. This is basically the net income, if you will, of the city as a whole. So this chart looks a little concerning. It shows a decrease in 2023, but remember, this is, these are all positive numbers. So you had net income in '21 of 2.6, net income in '22 of 2.7, net income again in 2023 of 1.3 million. So it's not a net loss. It's just not as much net income for the year. You know, that can be attributed to several different things. We've received less GMA/HEMA grants, and also kind of saw a pretty good increase in expenditures this year, specifically in public safety and public works, and also in water and sewer. And we'll get into some of those here in a minute, but again, this is government-wide, the whole city. This is kind of the trend. Questions there? All right, so here specifically the general fund, fund balance, over the last three fiscal years. You'll see kind of that same increasing trajectory in total fund balance, and this is a pretty healthy sign here that so much of this fund balance is unassigned fund balance. So your blue and your red down here at the bottom, that's fund balance that's basically already reserved for something else. This green is unassigned, which means it's for use of the council as you see fit. So unassigned fund balance at the end of '23, $3.85 million. That's an increase of about $570,000 from over fiscal, over 2022. So a pretty healthy increase there. Again, can be attributed to increase in property tax revenue. That was up about 20%. Additional LMIC in '23, and then there were some donations received in 2023, as well as sales tax revenue, the other indicators of the economy. But wanted to bring that to you guys' attention, thought that was pretty important and a pretty healthy sign. Glad to see that. All right, so this is your revenue and expenditure chart over the last three fiscal years for the general fund. You can kind of see how the lines are running parallel to each other as the years go, which means you're bringing in, your yellow line is your revenue and your blue line is your expenditures. So you're bringing in more revenue than you have expenditures in the general fund. That's a good thing, obviously. At the end of 2023, your general fund fund balance makes up about seven and a half months of your annual expenditures. So if the city was to not collect one more penny in revenue, your fund balance would cover seven and a half months of operations for the general fund. Anything over six is considered to be very healthy. So seven and a half months is a great ratio there. Any questions here? All right. So these are kind of some visuals for you guys. These are revenues by source, kind of breaks down what the different sources of the revenues are in the general fund. Obviously, there's a lot of them. The one thing I wanted to bring to your attention was that lost sales tax revenue and property tax revenues make up about 57% of your general fund revenues. So about half your general fund is financed through property tax and local auction sales tax. That does not include your spots. So that's just property tax and local auction sales tax. Got another visual here for expenditures. These are by function, so your functions are general government, judicial, public safety, public works, health and welfare, housing and development, culture and recreation. So public safety and public works make up about 76% of your general fund expenditures. I don't think that's any surprise to anybody, but just thought it was noteworthy, wanted to bring it to your attention, but as you can see, 58% of that is public safety. All right, your water and sewer fund over the last three years. So the operating revenue continued to increase in the water sewer fund. It increased about $200,000. And we saw increases in consumption as well. So consumption is up, revenues are up. But the revenue increase, the revenue gains, did not keep pace with the increase in expenses in the water fund. So expenses are up in the water fund of about $970,000, which is about 19%. So your operating expenses outpaced your operating revenue this year, which led to an operating loss of about $225,000. Now, you know, there was some things that happened this year that kind of led to that, and obviously, one of those is the water pollution control plant construction that's going on. So I understand when that comes on, there will be a good bit more capacity for sewer, which can kind of help grow some of those operating revenues, that top-line revenue, which is super important. Other noteworthy items in the water sewer fund, so your capital contributions decreased about $88,000 this year. So capital contributions would be developers that develop infrastructure and that contributed to the city. We saw a decrease in that of about $88,000. Also, transfers in decreased. Last year, they were $136,000. This year, they were zero. So no transfers into the water fund during 2023. And there was a transfer out of the water fund, increased about $55,000 in '23. So overall, change in net position, net income, net loss was, net loss of $209,000. So that's kind of the financial picture of the water fund. Questions on that? All right. So next, in the report, is our report on internal control and other matters. This is pages 87 and 88. So basically, we have to issue a report on internal control according to government audit standards. We do not opine on the effectiveness of the internal control. Also on this report is where we list any findings that we may have. So you can see the details of those on pages 87, 88, and on one of the letters that I gave you, not the one that has significant audit matters, it's the other letter that talks about any findings we have. All right. Next are current and future reporting changes. As you guys may know or may not know, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board kind of governs all of the standards for which governments have to account. They really believe in job security. They issue standards like crazy, faster than the Financial Accounting Standards Board, which does that for corporations and small businesses. So the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued effective for the year we just audited, GASB 96, which was guidance over accounting for what we call SEVITIS. That is an acronym for subscription-based information technology arrangements. So basically, any long-term subscriptions the city has, we now have to take those and book them on the balance sheet as a liability. So we implemented that standard during 2023. And then coming, not in 2024, but 2025, we have GASB 101, which is the pronouncement on compensated absence of all your accrued sick and vacation time. We now have to change the way we account for and report that. I'm not going to get into the details of that. I don't want to put you guys to sleep, but just something to be aware of for changes on the horizon. This is my contact information. Like I said, please reach out to me if you have any questions, concerns. I've also listed the firm website and our phone number. If you can't get me, just call and ask for somebody in government audit, and we can help you, but anytime you need something, please let us know. Glad to help. All right, and then last is, any questions?
Counsel? Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again for letting us serve as the city's auditor, and it's a pleasure. So thank you very much.
Thanks to our staff.
Absolutely. Deep thank you to the staff.
They did a good job.
They do, and we're thankful for them, because without them, our job would be very, very difficult. Yeah. All right, how do you want to, do you want me to just close this out?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right.
All right, Counsel. Well, thank you for working on that. Next item on the agenda.
Yes, do we need to accept this for distribution to the state? Lindsay?
I feel like we're just to be on the safe side, and we can submit it.
It has to go at the end of June, unless something's changed, and I know GASB changes it on the second. But I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2023 audit and distribute to the state as required.
Have a motion, right second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Moving on to the next item. At this time, what I will do is I will open this up for an hearing, appeal hearing. Agenda hearing or appeal hearing, item number one, the Roosters Market, I have Mary Elizabeth Burges.
Present. And you're letting me go first, or are you ready?
Mr. Hoppin, do you have preference on which party presents, and the other party is present, Mr. Ritter?
Probably be more informative for Ms. Burges to go first, to explain the situation, and then the applicant to come up and make his request regarding the issue.
Okay. Ms. Mayors, you were a...
I feel like we're just to be on the safe side. We can submit it.
Counselor's going to go on.
It has to go at the end of June unless something's changed. And I know GASB changes it on the second. But I'd like to make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three audit and distribute to the state as required.
Have a motion, I say.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion, Counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Why you name your big letter?
Counsel, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda that has presented this city goes to work sessions. You'll fall for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Let's proceed, Senator.
Have a motion, I say.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion, Counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say? Thank you, Counsel. Moving on to the next item. At this time, what I will do is I will open this up for an hearing, appeal hearing. Agenda hearing or appeal hearing out of number one, the Roosters Market. I have Mary Elizabeth Burges.
Present. And you're letting me go first or would you like?
Mr. Saffron, do you have preference on which party presents, the other party is present, Mr. Renner?
Probably be more informative for Ms. Burgess to go first to explain the situation and then the applicant to come up and make his request regarding the.
Okay. Ms. Mary, you are a.
Okay. So I'll only have to bear with me a little bit just because all this new stuff I have in my, uh, my neck is making it a little bit more entertaining to speak lately, but why are we? Oh, I guess I can. I'll close out of here. And as I said, so we did receive a, a field for violation, as you guys are aware, from our sign code. So as most of you have known, since we got started here last February, we started going around on our sign code enforcement. And the biggest thing was not enforcement, it was education. So we went around to the city and any, any signs that were prohibited by the bylaw or maybe in the wrong location. We educated our business owners, our residents on what is allowed in the city of Jasper per our ordinance, how to apply for it, and exactly, you know, for temporary versus permanent. And just basically, uh, the, basically wanted to inform everybody. So we didn't start actually doing violations until we, until in November. So it was roughly six months after we got started on our campaign, we started doing enforcement. So we have our community inspector, Ryan Ledbetter, which, yeah, I am happy to say is a level-one GACE certified through the Carl Vinson as our co-enforcement agent. So he is now certified through the state to do this as well. And so he has been working with Roosters Marketplace. So going over there several times in that six-month period, informing what is allowed, what is not allowed. And so unfortunately, compliance was not enough. And so on November fourteenth, twenty-three, we issued our first violation. And so this is a violation of chapter ninety-five, article two, section ninety-five dash eleven, prohibited signage and uses. So there are a list of several different sign types that are not allowed. Inflatable signs, animated signs, splashing signs, feather signs, bandit signs, lap kit signs, roof, pole, festoons, vehicular signs, traversion signs, and push yard signs. So, you know, the first violation going out, you know, was, was the festoon. And you can see the festoon in this. That was taken down. So we did not have to go any further with that violation. But then we started with the no more than two flags. So you are allowed by our regulation to have two flags on every site, commercial site. So on the fourteenth, a violation was issued for the four flags over at Roosters. And so the second violation was issued on February twenty-seventh, as we did not get compliance, and there was a violation attached to that. That was an eleven-hundred-dollar violation, a hundred dollars per flag that is out there. So basically, moving forward, Mr. Renner did speak that he was going to appeal with this. So at this time, we have documented all the conversations that we have had, all the warnings that have been issued. And at this time, we still do not have compliance. We are here for this violation. A third violation has been issued with a fine of nine hundred dollars for further additional signage on the site. We do not have a sign permit for any of these signs at this time.
This information is in the back of the report, Counsel? Counsel, that information is included? Any other emails?
Not at this time. As we've, oh, actually, we are always looking for compliance. Violations are the last thing that we actually want to do. But we are at, and I'm very happy to say, about ninety-nine percent compliance throughout the city. Everybody is very aware of our sign code and has been coming into compliance and working diligently with Mr. Ledbetter and myself to get everything within the regulations and guidelines.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Renner? Come forth, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, Counsel. I have a brief time tonight. Appreciate it. So what we're here to discuss is the fines that we've received and the actual ordinance that's being used. To this, Mary pointed out a notice on education. So let me go ahead and talk about what the education is and what the ordinance is. Because I think what we have is a defect in the application of the ordinance, the interpretation of such, and what we're looking at right there on that screen.
Mr. Renner, is any of that copy for the light to bind? Do you have anything?
Oh, no, this, a matter of fact, so what I have here is a press appeal hearing.
Okay.
I also have an email that was sent back to Ms. Goldbergh back on May seventeenth saying, are we going to combine these, the both violations into one? I never did get a response to that, so.
I still don't hear anything you wanted to hand.
No, no, I just have all my information. So I just want to go through, uh, everything you pretty much have is here. But like I said, I never, didn't know whether we're appealing both at once or not because I never got a response from your administration. But getting back to what Mary said about education. So I have a copy of, once was chapter ninety-four of the site ordinance, chapter ninety-five, and then we proceed to chapter ninety-five, which is the current. And as I go through here, one of the things that I look at is we've been on that site since two thousand and nineteen. In our discussions with Lonnie Waters, who was the head of the department and the one empowered with authority over it, we go, what is allowed and what's not allowed? Well, as we start off, we have these signs here, these flags, okay? Flags are defined by Webster Dictionary as it could be a declaration, it could be anything. Flags is defined by your ordinance, is a flag that incorporates signs. It's fabric that's distinctive of colors, it's patterns, logos, or symbols used as an official symbol of a government or any entity, organization. You do not see a flag as defined by your ordinance in any of the pictures that are depicted. What you see is a decoration, not a flag as defined by the ordinance. The second thing is the applicability of these, these fines that we've received, the definitions that have been put forth, festoons. They go to the current ordinance of what the definition of a festoon is. And the festoon is the type of animated sign made with strings, ribbons, tencils, small flags, pennies, stringers, pinwheels, cords, narrow strips, plastic fabrics, pliable materials. Nowhere in any of those photos depicted in this is a festoon. You might see an inflatable, which by ordinance is not allowed. But none of the fines that we've received, none of the guidelines we received, none of the warnings we've received said you have an inflatable on your property that needs to come down. You have a festoon and a flag. And by definition, none of those items are depicted anywhere in these violations. So there's no flags by definition of the ordinance in this. There's no festoon by definition of the ordinance in this. So when you come down to it, Webster's has one definition of a flag, but the city of Jasper has varying definitions of what their ordinance has gone through in these reiterations. As we've looked at it all and tried to abide by it, we go back to the directive from Lonnie Waters. When Lonnie Waters came out, he says, I really want your semi off the road. It looks bad. I said, fine. Do you have any problem with any of our other advertising, our other decorations? Nope. We have that in a text message from him. And he confirmed that what we were doing at the time was fine. That text message was sent back in two thousand and twenty-one. Actually, it's September first of two thousand and twenty-one. Supreme Court of the state of Georgia recognizes the text message as long as the identifiable participants in the text can be identified and in their capacity have the authority to communicate in a non-privileged manner that says, this in fact becomes binding. So we start off with that. The whole thing here, I think what it comes down to is when we had our feather flags out there, Ryan came out and said, Mr. Renner, you can't have your feather flags. We took down the feather flags. He says, but you can have flags. Fine, we put the flags up. Then he comes back two weeks later and goes, oh, no, I misinterpreted that. Now, this is the guy that you're sending to get a level-one certification, whatever. He doesn't even know what the ordinance says. He doesn't even know what the definitions and the terms of the ordinance are. And he's out there handing out fines or creating pictures to hand out fines and come back here. So I got a problem with that as well because what it is, is if you want to hand somebody a ticket and you go to court and the ticket says I was speeding, and the cop says, oh, wait a second, I pulled him over for a seatbelt violation, what's the ticket worth? It's a technicality that you could walk on. And I think we've seen enough in technicalities with Trump in New York this week. He claims one thing, somebody else claims something other. But the technicalities are what we live and die by when it comes to countless pages that are printed. If this is what you're going to enforce and you say you can't have flags, but the definition of what I'm looking at is not in your ordinance, how am I in violation? And when you hand somebody a violation, it's incorrectly worded, which I'm sure she just referred to the third one coming. It's going to be worded no different than these two. How is that a valid violation? So you have technical defects on administration, enforceability, applicability. Where do we stand? I think it's a bigger picture. It's not just us that brings this to light because we get these fines. I think you got a bigger problem with the wording of your ordinance, how it's being enforced, how it's being interpreted, and a lack of education, training, applicability, enforcement, and stuff like that. So when I look at it, a flag like we have here is not a flag, it's a decoration. It doesn't require a permit. Because one of the things that was brought to our attention is, do you have anything from the city that says you're allowed to do this? Do you have a receipt that says those are valid and we authorize them? I don't need a permit to put a decoration up. I appreciate y'all's time tonight, and I hope that, that I educated you a little bit as Mary talked about education, she went in, but I emphasized that. But I think what I pointed out, there's a real education here. And I think it needs to be looked at overall. It's just unfortunate that I'm standing here with hundreds of thousands of dollars from the fines, pointing out to you what the problem is. Do y'all have any questions for me?
No, sir. What happens typically in these appeal hearings, the presentation from the city perspective, the party's perspective, it's all taken under advisement by the council, by charter, by rule. They have sixty days to make a decision. So it's for hearing purposes only. Unless counsel sees that I don't know that actually we're taking it simply for the presentation of facts.
I was just curious, do you have any questions after I pointed all this stuff out? I understood the procedural rules. Thank you.
Good sir, your time is. Mr. Saffron, if you are good to close, then I'll motion out. I'm going to close the hearing. Thank you. At this time, I'll open new public hearings. There are three items in the next public hearings. Item number one, annex and rezone parcels, Mary Burgess. Don't read all the numbers.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't want to stand right behind him, sitting down. I didn't want to sit behind him, standing behind him. Anyway, all right, moving forward. So the first item that we have is continuation from a previous meeting, which is a request by the downtown development authority to annex and rezone parcel zero five three eight zero nine two, also known as four ninety Liberty Lane, from county highway business to M one general industry. So this is located off of five fifteen on Liberty Lane. You may know it because we have our Liberty Tower on there, our Liberty Water Tower. It's point eight four acres. It has water and septic, frontage on a public way, four hundred feet on actual Liberty Lane. And it has the Liberty Tower, two storage sheds, and a cabin. So right now, its surrounding neighbors consist of MAC Industries and A D fabrication, HVAC welding, and so forth. There is a storage, another storage shed in the county that also has an RV over there, the defunct cement plant to the east, and of course, it is bound by Highway five fifteen. So for this, we always look, of course, at our comprehensive plan, see if these items are supportive. So one of the main criteria is will this be a burden on our infrastructure? Considering that it is our infrastructure, I'm hoping that it would not be a burden. And it does, it is a main, our, one of our main water resources. So as the comprehensive plan does state, institutional uses are part of how a city functions. So anytime that we can rezone or annex something into our city that is also a part of our utility infrastructure, it is, take that as a positive. So as far as the rezoning portion, for it to be the industrial use, because it does have utility, which is considered an industrial use, and the storage sheds are storage sheds. So that, that use is compatible in the, with the surrounding uses. So this was also approved by Higgins County Board of Commissioners on April fifteenth to deannex. So they are on board with us taking this into the city. So staff recommendation with approval with conditions. As always, we need to make two motions. One is to allow the annexation, and then, of course, one to rezone. As always, we put the condition on as we are no different than any other applicant that we must comply by all the rules and regulations set forth by the city of Jasper zoning code.
Thank you, Mary. Public hearing, anyone else here to speak on this item?
Okay, item number two is to discuss the request by the city of Jasper to, to rezone parcel J A zero three zero four one, located eight fifty-two Pioneer Road on point eight nine acres from R one to M one. So over here, this is our water and sewer operations utility base. It is on public utilities. It does have frontage on Pioneer, sixty feet, sixty-five feet down on Pioneer, two hundred and fifteen feet on Frontier. And as said, it is water sewer, utility operations are located here. So surrounding uses, to the north of it is the utility yard. To the south of it is a commercial use, zone C two. To the east of it is city-owned flood plain. And then to the west of it is the cabinet manufacturer and fabricator, copper cabinets. So again, staff analysis, comprehensive plan. This is one of our institutional uses and locations. It does abut other manufacturing and light industry uses in this area. As you are aware, this area over there. As you are aware, this area over there is adjacent to Hood Road, which has several industrial uses, such as the old shoe factory and propane distribution are also located up there, other M1 uses. And so also, this site has been used in this capacity for over 40 years. So staff recommendation is to approve the rezoning from R1 to M1, and any future development must follow all applicable rules and regulations.
Anyone in the public here to speak on item number two? Item number three?
So this is item number three. The City of Jasper is bringing forth parcel JA03041, located on Frontier Road, to rezone from R1 to M1 General Industry. Again, it's located on Frontier Road, accessed through what we just discussed on parcel JA03040, the utility yard, this is the utility yard to the utility's operation headquarters. So this is right behind it. It's approximately four acres over there. So again, surrounding uses, we have propane distribution, we have city-owned floodplain, and we have the utility yard itself. This has been used in this capacity for over 40 years again, and it will be continued to be used in that fashion. So also rezoning it to a light industry is compatible with the surrounding uses, as they are mostly industrial as well. So again, we are recommending approval of the rezoning with the general condition that any future development will follow all rules and regulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone here to speak on item number three? With that being said, we will close the public hearings. Thank you, ma'am. We will go to unfinished business, item number one, Ms. Burgess. This item, Ms. Burgess states continuation 7-1, 2024, for our city attorney, for an actor.
Yes, it is. We are making great progress. We have received our stormwater review deck from our consultant. There are only a few minor items. They also submitted the latest building plans, which only had a couple of things that needed to be redone. So I think we're going to be able to come into compliance for July. That is my hope, at least. And that's what I have informed Mr. Seidman of as well.
Fantastic. Counsel, this time I entertain a motion to read such as this will be tabled until the next meeting of this council, not tentative on a date. Just the next meeting of council.
Summon.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Item number two, consideration approval of request to rezone. This item that is listed on the agenda, counsel, has had an update to it. The applicant for this item has made a request to be withdrawn. Is that accurate, Ms. Burgess?
Yes, that is. I have received an email from the applicant stating that they no longer wish to move forward with the project and are requesting to remove their application.
Thank you, ma'am. That has been reviewed by legal?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, this time entertain a motion to accept that withdrawal request.
Summon.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'm accusing myself. What is my?
Yes. All in favor, counsel? Opposed? Thank you. If you will note that for the record, now to the clerk?
Yes.
Item number three, consideration approval of request modification to ordinance, Mary Burgess.
Thank you. This was, again, a, this was tabled at the last hearing, and so we were, this is for the Haley Farms on the northwest side of 515 in Philadelphia. This is an existing PUD. We were asking to, or the applicant is asking to modify the existing ordinance 2021-25 to remove 6.69 acres. This was the parcel to the north of the project off of Appalachian Court. That parcel proved to be too hard to develop due to creek and other restrictions over there, getting water and sewer across the creek and so forth and so on. However, that did leave the owner of said parcel with a PUD zoning that they could not utilize. So we brought this up to the applicant, said we need to rectify this. So the conditions, our recommendation is the condition, or is approval with conditions, and of course, that first condition is to remove 030B061001 from the, that might not be the right, yes, it is, to remove that parcel from the PUD ordinance, and to also add an additional condition, which states that the new commercial development along Philadelphia and 515 are to, when they submit for a site plan approval, they are to follow whatever guidelines are current when they submit. So as you know, all of our ordinances are updating, and we are moving towards greater, not restrictions, but better oversight, and so making sure that the new commercial development is held to that standard is one of those conditions as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Mayor, may, my department is fair, rezoning ordinance in accordance with Ms. Burgess's recommendations. So if the council is on the line to approve the recommendation, then I would ask that y'all approve the rezoning ordinance that tracks what she threatened to do.
Would you like two separate motions, or could a motion cover the rezone and the ordinance?
Thank you, big guy.
And, counsel, yield the floor for motion to approve the rezone and the ordinance.
Summon.
And a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to be clear on what stage we are in this project. Obviously, we're all, we've been dealing with it, plus or negative, for quite some time. And the request is basically, I understand why you're before us tonight. Have they submitted a new site plan that is in the process of being approved? Is that?
Yes, yes. So the reason why this came up is because I didn't notice that the other, this parcel had never been included in the site plan, so they had submitted, and then when they submitted their plat, I noticed the numbers weren't adding up correctly.
Okay.
And so that's when we started a conversation. So they have actively been trying to get their site plan approved, and we've been working diligently to get to that point. We have been working with them, as you recall, with the LDP, and we've also been working with them to get their lot timbered and try and keep moving this project forward, but also the oversight that it's needed.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion, counsel?
Mary, is the applicant here?
Yes.
I'd like to ask if you understand the conditions and accept the conditions.
I guess, yes.
And I may have asked that before, but...
Yeah, now, we've been working with Mary Elizabeth on this, and so we want to do, we want to do it right with the owners of the seven acres, and obviously, there's been some, you know, just going through the engineering process, you just have changes, you know, we have reduced the residential zone, the density, 50%. I mean, we were originally zoned for 199, now we're down to like 100, so, and then we've taken the residential off the highway, or asked him to, you know, to make that commercial. It's just silly to have houses on the highway, that's where you want your commercial. So just going through the process, that's where we are, and we're 100% okay with the recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, ma'am. New business, item number one, consideration approval of ordinance 2024-11 for the annexation and rezoning of parcel, Mary Burgess.
As previously discussed, this would be two motions, first one to annex, second one to rezone. This is 490 Liberty Lane with our Liberty Tower on there, and the recommendation is approval with the condition to follow all rules and regulations of development.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion on the annexation.
So.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel?
I refuse to ask the question if the owner accepts the condition.
I don't know this program. You need to.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion on the rezoning request.
So.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. New business, item number two, consideration approval of ordinance 2024-12 for the rezoning of parcel, Mary Burgess.
Again, this is 852 Pioneer Road. This is where our water sewer and utility operations base is. So we are requesting to rezone from R1 to M1 with the condition of, any future development must follow the rules and regulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
So.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
So it's my understanding that this is a voluntary action taken on the part of the city to come in to get a non-conforming piece of property to conform? Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Item number three, consideration approval of ordinance 2024-13 for the rezoning of parcel, Mary Burgess.
Yes, this is the utility yard, located right behind utility operations. It's four acre parcel, and we are recommending approval from the R1 to the M1 so that it can continue its operations.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
So.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Likewise, this is the city's initiative to bring a non-conforming property into conform, or to make it right.
Yes, yes, to make sure that the light industry work that we do at the yard is actually in correspondence with the zoning.
Is there any chance that this will be the last time we ever have to do this?
No. You know, I can bring three out of each meeting if you'd like, it's like taking a...
Thank you. Counsel, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to get a house seat. Item number four, consideration approval of alcohol license for Mountain Package Store, Ms. Lindsay Williams, find her record, come on down.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight I bring before you an alcohol license application for, to sell beer, wine, and liquor by the package. The applicant is, I apologize about the drinker name, is Miss Patel, Miss Patel. And the store is First Mountain Package Store, it's to be located on Noah Drive. The parcel is 030V018206. While we reference the parcels, because we do not have an IML address yet, because this is still vacant lot. The applicant just wants counsel approval before they move too far in the building process, which they've been working with Mary Elizabeth in the Development Department on. They have met all the requirements, background check, everything is complete. So staff is recommending approval with the following contingencies, that they pay all alcohol fees, business license is the same name as the alcohol license, alcohol license will not be issued until successfully attains a certificate of occupancy, and any alcohol infringements that occur will result in suspension, and suspension. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. The applicant is present to seek?
Yes.
Yes, we are, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. With that being said, there are contingencies staff is presenting. Is the applicant aware and accepts all conditions that's presented?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Summon.
Have a motion and a second? Motion and a second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number five, consideration approval to add city manager to signature cards, Ms. Williams.
Easy one. Staff is recommending that we add our city manager, Brandon Douglas, to all of our city's by council on additional time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, do you understand the ten thousand conditions that that...
I do think so.
Thank you. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Move, we approve signature addition of Brandon Douglas to the council. Thank you, counsel.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel?
Sir?
Yes, sir. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number six, consideration approval of quote from T. Stanco for downtown restroom project, Andrew Collins, sir, utilities director, please come forward. Item number one, congratulations and welcome to the team, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and council, good afternoon. It looks like I'm the first one asking for money today. All right, so I, we have...
First meeting, Andrew?
Yes, first meeting here, and I'm asking the first one for money.
Look, John's like, "He is."
But I am the head of the fire department, so I might be all right. Item number six is for the pad prep for the long-winded restrooms, downtown public restroom. They are slated on their item here, you see that they were slated for a June 20th delivery. We found out yesterday, or Friday, that that is potentially pushed to the 21st of June, so they are still coming in that same week. And to get ready for those, we have to have to do, add prep and ready to accommodate the new bathroom. There's demo, and then we have to add gravel base compaction and get everything ready. We got to relocate some sewer lateral, we had to add water, we had to get power to the project. We reached out for quotes to four different, to four different companies. Two could not meet the timeline that we requested, so they denied a quote. We did receive two from other contractors. We have one for Stanco, T. Stanco, for $33,485, and then AMC Grading LLC returned one with As part of this project as well, we're putting in the new public restroom that is going to be a highlight on that end of downtown. So in doing this project as well, this quote is also covering our ADA compliance sidewalks in front of that corner on D.B. Carroll. And it was also removing the non-ADA compliant set of stairs on either side where the bank uses it. This is for getting everything ready, so on the 21st, when the building arrives, we will have everything available and everything ready to accept the bathroom. Preface to this, there will not, this does not include the masonry work once the building is and stuff.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you have the numbers in front of you, T. Stanco being the lowest at $33,485. Yield the floor for a motion.
Take a motion, we accept a low bid from T. Stanco.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number seven, consideration approval of roadway pavement condition survey with Infrastructure Management Services, or IMS, Kim Goldner, Assistant City Mayor, welcome here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight I bring before you a proposal from a company called Infrastructure Management Services, or IMS for short. This is a company that I had met with last year at some point to talk about what they affectionately call the Scan Van. This piece of equipment will travel your roadways, and it does 3D condition assessment of basically whatever you'd like for it to do, asphalt, curb and gutter, it has the ability to do sidewalk if you'd like, storm sewers, really whatever you would like for it to scan. The neat part about it is that not only is it assessing the severity and depth of any kind of imperfections in your roadway, ruts, cracks, anything like that, it is also verifying... it is also verifying the mileage of all of the roads that we are responsible for maintaining. And that is extremely important to the city from an L-MIG perspective and any other kind of state monies that we may receive for roadway maintenance because it is all based off of mileage and we want to make sure that that number is accurate. The city has been growing. We accept more roads in every year. And so we want to make sure that that number is the correct number, so we are being compensated correctly. We talk a lot about building capital improvement plans and making sure that we know what our priorities are in doing rehabilitative work. And so having this assessment will allow us to prioritize those sections of roadway that actually need to be tackled first. There are things that you cannot see with the naked eye that may be, you know, you think that a road looks great and it's really not, or it may not look so great, but it's just a cosmetic sort of imperfection. And so this is why the city would like to go ahead and proceed with this. They are a part of a purchasing cooperative called Texas Share, which the city is a member of. And through purchasing cooperatives, that means that your contracts are already pre-vetted. They are, you have everything worked out, kind of done for you in advance. I did ask Mr. Siphon to review the contract that we would be entering into agreement. And as I mentioned Thursday, he had pointed out a couple of things that we probably need some clarification on, mostly dealing with the length of data management and ownership. And so we are working on getting those answers. And obviously, we would not enter into the actual contract with IMS until we had those worked out to satisfaction of a city attorney and our staff. So council has requested to approve the city entering into the contract with IMS using that Texas Share Purchasing Cooperative for roadway pavement condition survey work. The estimated price is $27,280 and that is based on an assumed 50 miles. It could go down if our mileage is not 50 miles. It could go up a little if we have more than 50 miles of roadway. But this is a good investment in our path moving forward and making sure that we are getting the kind of money that we do need in order to rehabilitate the city's owned roads and prioritize those things well. Happy to answer any questions.
Now, before I yield the floor for a motion, would you like to ask for a not to exceed amount? Are you comfortable with the 27 to 28?
I, I'm reluctant to say a not to exceed amount because I'm not really sure what our roadway miles are at this point. We were, I have heard higher numbers than what the 50 is that we have based it on. But L-MIG was based on 42 miles last year. So I think 50 is a fair number. You know, if council would like to say not to exceed 30,000, you know, I'm not really sure honestly what the right answer to that question is. Our city manager would like for us to go up though.
Well, it sounds like we have a lot riding on that as well, but.
Well, we do. So, you know, yes, it could end up costing a little bit more money. But again, it's an investment in the future and what we will be getting. This is an L-MIG approved expense, you know, engineering is included in that. We could also use 2014 SPOST to pay for this because that is exclusively for sidewalks, roadways, that sort of thing. So we have a couple of different avenues to go ahead and cover both of these costs and I consider this a great investment.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve the expenditure not to exceed $30,000.
Have a motion, council?
Motion second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
My favorite item.
Let me get to my favorite item.
Yes, ma'am. Number eight, consideration and approval of matching funds for the 2024 GDOT TAP grant award. Ms. Goldner, would you explain to us what this is quickly?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. So as I explained on Thursday, in February of this year, staff submitted an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP for short. And this would be for funding assistance for new right-of-way improvements, sidewalk, utilities, drainage system upgrades along North Main Street between Chambers Street and Burton Street. You'll recall last year in 2023, we did obtain this same grant from GDOT for preliminary engineering and design of sidewalks. And the reason why staff selected North Main Street between Chambers and Burton for the 2024 program is because a couple of the sidewalks that are currently under design through the 2023 grant tie into North Main Street. And so if we were awarded the $20,000, this would be a great way to continue that connectivity and the walkability of the city. Very pleased to announce that we have been awarded funding. The 2024 program is a little different from 2023 in that this is not only for preliminary engineering and design, this is for the whole shebang. So it's engineering, it is for utility relocation and upgrades, and it is for the actual sidewalk construction itself. And so we've been awarded funding in the amount of $1,651,000. The city is responsible for a 20% match on that. That equals $330,000 roughly. And that will be in kind of a tiered program. We do not have to come up with all of that money at one time. It's with each phase, engineering, the utility, the sidewalk construction. I think 2020 SPOST will be the appropriate way to go and pay for this. I'm not sure that this project will be fully completed by the 2014 SPOST. That time period is over. And so I am asking council to please approve the city's 20% matching portion of the 2024 GDOT TAP grant award for right-of-way improvements along North Main Street.
Council, yield the floor for a motion.
So move.
Motion second.
Second.
And before I call for a vote, I would like to say thank you and congratulations, Ms. Goldner.
Very good job.
For dedicating to seek these funds.
Thank you.
That's phenomenal. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few comments.
Yes, sir.
I ask you, you should be very well prepared. As I asked this in our work session. You've been with us a little over two years, is that right?
Yes, sir. It'll be three in September.
And do you know the dollar amount of grants that you've been able to obtain on behalf of the city of Jasper?
Yes, sir. It's just over $3.2 million.
So on top of that, I want to personally thank you for the other contributions you've made to our city as well, both in project management, acting as our inner city manager. I think a lot of us, all of us are in a very exciting times right now and we couldn't have done it without you, Kim.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Item number nine, consideration approval of resolution 2024-11 for Main Street program for Brandon, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And under normal circumstances, I would have had that go last, looking in on a high note. But I do not want to follow that. And I do want to add comments before we get into the particular item. The two weeks and a couple of days that I've been blessed to be back, I will tell you that Kim's contribution to this community far exceeds any amount that she's already provided. So you can enumerate that all you want, but that's already my assessment. So with that, I do want to bring up the fact that, as many of you know, sometimes I'm not the easiest to reach. I appreciate Amy Ben here because I recognize that I missed an email that came through Thursday, Friday. But I'm glad to see you and I'm thankful to see you here tonight because this is a really monumental occasion. I think this solidifies what this council has been working towards for a number of years, probably dating back well before 2017. But around that time, I think there were some key stakeholders in this council that was really championing the idea of how do we continue to invest in our downtown? What does that look like in terms of, you know, our Main Street? Well, there's a Main Street program that the Georgia Department of Community Affairs recognizes. And it is kind of, you know, how do you arrive at certain places, you have to take the first step. So I'm very honored that you all give me the ability to, hopefully this evening, have you all consider a resolution, which is the initial step of just providing DCA with essential documentation that you're resolving to continue investing in your downtown as you have in the Main Street. And so partners like Amy and the DDA and our Main Street businesses, I think they'll be proud that this council has essentially said, yes, we want to take that step, put in an application, so in concert with the actual resolution that you all will be considering, it would also be to put in the application, we'll put in before July 1st. Just for the public, the process would be that if DCA recognizes that this would be a good candidate, you become an affiliate member for at least a year. That would enable us to continue our due diligence of executing memorandum of understandings, ensuring that we've continued to fund certain staffing positions of support along with our volunteer organizations. So with that, just like to commend you all for taking this step of even having it on the agenda for consideration. And I'll be more than happy to help ask any questions or say Amy not to put her on your spot. But she's here and I'm sure she's excited to speak as well.
Council, yield the floor for a motion to approve resolution 2024-11.
So move.
Second.
And a motion is second. Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second. Thank you, council. Congratulations and thank you, but thank you.
May I add a few comments, sir?
Yes, sir.
So this is kind of a very emotional time, I think, for Amy and I in particular because we were very passionate about this request sometime. And I want to thank Amy for keeping it going through some tough times. And, and she's been there the whole time. And, and has championed downtown area. And it shows a little bit of planning, a little bit of gumption to do. Also remind the council, of course, that it's one of our strategic initiatives from our retreat last year to get this underway. And, and so Amy, thank you very much, and others, but particularly, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, council, committee report updates. You do have your committee reports present. Parks and property, it looks like it's first in the packet.
What a busy month for parks and property. They kick it off, doors Wiggington Park, and wasn't able to attend Saturday, but heard that it was just a wonderful event from the community, from staff, just everyone that was present had such great things to say. So to those for the team for coming together, Kim did an amazing job and excited to have that open now. Outside of that, we also, for Jasper City Park, we had our town hall meeting on the 21st. It was just a great time and thank you for everyone for coming out, letting your voice and letting it be heard. Uh, let's see, what else?
Copy with the cops.
Oh, well, I would say.
I have an update from outside. Yep.
Yeah.
Any other areas of parties?
Lee Newton moving forward with walking paths and waiting for a quote there. And lastly, something I was excited to see too is safety. So we did speak with our public work staff, just talking about getting some updated safety equipment, vests, strobe lights and so forth. So excited to continue on that path and ensure that our guys are safe out there.
Alright. Public Safety Judicial Committee?
Another big month in Public Safety Judicial.
Right.
Coffee with a cop. We had a wonderful event there at the carriage house. So excited to beat those off and giving the community a chance to come in and interact with our staff. So I thought that was very well done. And then also to our municipal court, we have the metal detector installed and they're winning their update for the court software.
Thank you. Fair press committee?
Waste water plant expansion continues. Well, not on schedule. I think it is picking up. Fair enough to say. Long Swamp Creek dredging will be scheduled to begin in July, so we look forward to getting that project started. And then there's some discussion about the water tank inspection program. We had an update on that and work continues on those.
Well, the next item would be for class five upstream mine storage. Of course, we got that letter of confirmation that ECD's approval to move forward. But that exploration and the city approved the money to get the geologists involved. So look forward to definitely positive results from that. And I think that's maybe a little bit of revitalization of some projects that have fallen with all the other things we have going on. Some things have kind of lost our attention and where we're doing that interest.
Thank you, committee. Finance that, ma'am?
Some discussion of the audit that was presented this evening. I cannot express enough thanks to all the staff, particularly finance group, on how well that meant. Thank you for adding Bradley to the signature card. That was a big discussion there. And we're still looking at job descriptions. Still looking at job descriptions and we'll be, want to look at them for a while longer.
Anything else?
Like to make notation to the public. We, a few years ago, decided to support our police and pay their dues for POAB. And the dues have gone up and we are going to continue and support them and take the cost on for them so they don't have to.
Yes, council, that was on your considered agenda, I believe. Thank you for that. Investing in public safety?
Absolutely.
One other item. Mr. Looney, if you would talk about Small Business Development Council, you have a presentation. What time anywhere?
Uh, I'll be doing a presentation on accounting, all things, at the Woodbridge Inn tomorrow at 6:00. I'm sure that that has been advertised to the point of ad nauseam. They enjoyed having my picture out on the elements. Anyway, we will be giving a presentation to interested parties through the Small Business Development Council at Woodbridge Inn tomorrow at 6:00.
Thank you. Seeing no other committee report updates, this time on your agenda, there is a call for executive session for real estate legal. Entertained a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Have a motion and second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second. We all, executive session. Thank you.
Executive session.
Have a motion, second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second. Thank you, council. It is 8:26. We are now back in open session. Thank you, council. City manager, if you will prepare mid-year budget amendments for the elected body by the next time we meet to discuss and further the initiative of building a second City of Jasper fire station at 490 Liberty Lane. And have that ready to present to the elected body at that time.
Yes, sir.
Saying no further business for the City of Jasper, entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second. Opposed, say? Thank you, council.